Looks like a job for Jonathan. Oh, that sounds better. We think it'll...
I think it might work now. Hello? Is it working?
Turn it on.
It's on. How about now? Well, I will do my best to just kind of project here as much as I possibly can. My name is Carrie Capablon. I am with Alcee Levine. I'm a project manager with this with this project and we are helping the village or with the city with the update to the comprehensive plan. How are we going to be doing glasses on and off a bit because I need for a screen. So just a little bit about tonight, we are going to go over the vision goals and preliminary land use framework. So this is our agenda for this evening. I'll give a planning process update, just give you an idea of where we are in the process. And then the rest of the evening will be really more of like a discussion based workshop. We'll review the vision statement. We'll go over the preliminary goals and then get into the land use framework for the plan itself. And if at any time you have questions, please do stop me. And then, of course, at the end, we'll talk a little bit about the next steps. So just a little bit about the planning process. This is the entirety of where the planning process is. We were out here in October for the kickoff and to do existing conditions, kind of taking a look at where the city is right now on the ground, doing a little bit of homework and getting some of that reconnaissance in. We also had public engagement where we were talking with a bunch of folks. We had focus group discussions, about eight of them. We also had a community kickoff and visioning workshop where folks were asked to come out and sit around maps and give their vision for the future and identify where the areas of the city are that they wanted to see things preserved, where some ideas were for certain kinds of developments and what the vision is for the future of Galena. So again, we did that back in October and here we are. There we go. So that was the first kind of third of the process. We're right here, right in the middle. So we're going to be talking about the vision statement and the key recommendations, then the future land use map. So this is really kind of the heart. This will make up what the core of the plan will be. And then basically, how do we get there? Where we've been, where we are, where do we want to go? How do we get there? That's really the plan itself. So in the spring and into a little bit of the fall, early fall, we'll be getting into the comprehensive plan itself and then will be an opportunity for a community open house to come in, get some more input on the plan, ask questions of us, and we'll have that scheduled for again prior to adoption in the fall. So that's really in a nutshell. We've come a long way already, but we are right in need of it. So this is what we're going to be talking about tonight. So let's get started right away with the vision statement. What is the vision statement? It's an aspirational statement that is informed by the public process. So all of the information that we received from the community engagement thus far goes into the vision statement. We heard from city officials. We've heard from different department heads. We've heard from different members of community groups. And that's all going into the vision statement along with some of the things that we saw while we were here doing reconnaissance. So it's a collective desire for the community's future. It's looking out for 20 years and it's the foundation for the plan's goals, recommendations, and actions. It really does give us an idea of where the city wants to be and that informs the rest of the plan. And again, it's based on community feedback. This is the draft vision statement. This has gone to the staff and we've had some conversations about it, but just want to walk you through. You have the entirety in front of you, but we'll go over this step by step to see if we're on track and if there are things that we need to change. So by 2045, Galena will be a welcoming and vibrant destination, celebrated for its rich look of history, preserved charm, and unique identity. The city will balance this role as a dynamic tourist destination with its commitment to being an exceptional place to live, fostering a strong sense of belonging and pride among residents and visitors alike. Galena will encourage the development and expansion of commercial businesses along its major corridors, supporting economic diversification and growth. By encouraging new commercial and industrial developments outside of the tourism sector, Galena will build a resilient economy that serves both residences, residents, and businesses. This is part one of three. This is going to be the entire vision statement, but this is just the first third of the vision statement.
Just a comment. Are we open to comments throughout this or?
Absolutely.
And maybe I'm taking this too literally, but I see that by 2045, Galena will be a welcoming and vibrant destination. How about continue to grow as a welcoming or something? Because I feel like we are a welcoming and vibrant destination today. Just a thought.
Why wait for 20 years when you've had it already?
Yeah.
The vision statement is looking out 20 years, but you're absolutely right. Continue to be a welcoming and vibrant destination.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Part two of the vision statement. Galena's neighborhoods will provide ample housing that fits the needs of residents' household size and budget. Residential growth in Galena will address the needs of a growing population and the desire for attainable housing. Homes will be retained and historic homes will be rehabilitated and preserved. The city will prioritize walkability, biking, and efficient transportation, making it easy for residents and visitors to explore downtown Galena, access residential services, and connect with neighboring communities. Downtown Galena will remain a historic and vibrant part of the city filled with restaurants, shops, and thriving businesses that meet the everyday needs of residents while attracting visitors year round. As a sought after destination, downtown Galena will drop people from near and far as the hub of civic activity, events, and entertainment for the city. Now you will notice as we go through this that there are kind of sections in which we try and address all types of development within the city itself. Were there any comments or initial reactions to this portion of the vision statement? Nope? Okay. And then finally, the third part of the vision statement. Galena's parks, conservation areas, and extensive trail networks, including those along the scenic Galena River and in Grant Park, will be cherished as natural assets that connect the community and the region. Recreational opportunities for people of all ages will contribute to the city's strong sense of community. High-quality schools will continue to serve children across... that should be Galena. There is a little bit of an error there. nurturing a bright future for the next generation. With its preserved charm, vibrant downtown, and engaged and connected community, Galena will continue to be recognized as one of the best places to visit in Illinois and one of the top small towns in America. A city that not only welcomes visitors, but also provides an unparalleled quality of life for those who call it home. Now, taking those three parts together, does that encompass everything for the vision statement for Galena? Is there anything that we needed to add in? Anything that needs to be clarified? Is there anything that we missed?
I hope that's... looks pretty apprehensive to me. Anyone else?
You... go ahead. The only thing I was thinking of, because it came up in every meeting repeatedly, but I don't know how you'd wicker it in here. Maybe it's in more of the upcoming pieces, but the common item continued to be parking for the folks. Is that part of your vision statement? You might be able to wicker it in there by, you know, ease of access or something for all generations. It'd be a tough one to wicker in there. We just got to make sure we attack that strongly in the package. I'm sure you all heard it loud and clear like I did. That's one of the number one issues.
So that was one of the number one issues that we heard when we were here doing focus groups and talking to folks as well. As far as parking is concerned, the vision statement is really intended to be aspirational. Once you drill down into really specific things like parking needs, that goes more into goals and getting into the chapter.
So you'll hit it in the rest of the package then?
Yes.
Fair enough. Sorry, Desiree. Go ahead.
No, no, you're fine. I peeked ahead and I did see parking mentioned, so I know it's coming up. I was just going to say, I heard mentioned a lot in the community meetings, the balance of tourism and the people that live here every day. And I think you did a really good job putting that in the statement. I think that was a big theme that I heard come out.
And if you think of anything as we continue this discussion, please feel free just to, you know, call it out. This is really more of a discussion. It's a kind of free form thing. We have these slides just to kind of help us guide the discussion so that we can... we make sure that we get through everything, but certainly if you think of something as we move on.
Thank you.
So turning now to the goals, we're going to get into more of what the meat of the memo is. And so let's just start a little bit with what is a goal? Well, it's a broad and long-range desired outcome. It's something that you are hoping to achieve in the future. It's ambitious and it requires many small-scale kinds of incremental actions in order to be fully realized. So why do we have a picture of a runner here? Well, it's a little bit of an example of why we have goals. So I may have a goal of running a 10-minute mile. As I work toward that, I'm making incremental improvements in order to meet my goal. Those are all important. I may never actually meet that goal for various reasons, but everything that I do along the way is an important step toward meeting that goal. I am working toward it. I'm making accomplishments and achievements. And that's what we're really trying to do here. You have a goal that's really broad and long-range, but you take steps in order to meet that goal. Even if you don't fully achieve it, you are still making good strides toward what you hope to achieve in the future. And goals can be carried over as well. The comprehensive plan should be a living document. So even though we're looking out 20 years, this document will continue to be updated. It'll be updated as development happens, as different policies become important to the city. Just it has to reflect what the changing nature of the city is. So it could happen in a couple of years. Five years is usually about a good starting point. And certainly by that 10-minute mark, you should be updating this. So again, that's a time to reevaluate these goals, making sure they're still aligning what the city's... what the city wants to achieve in the future. So the first goal that we have for land use and development, which is very broad category, is to ensure that future growth and development in the city aligns with the future land use map, which we'll be talking about. Promoting a balanced approach to growth, preservation, and adaptability to the communities involving economic, social, and environmental needs. So within these goals, we also have some recommendations in order to help the city achieve these goals. So these goals are going to be forming kind of the main text of the plan itself. And the recommendations are going to be specific in order to help the city achieve these goals. We do have some within the memo itself. We can go over them. Some of them are... some of the goals have more key recommendations or initial considerations than others. That doesn't mean that these are the only ones. That doesn't mean that some of these might not be a little bit combined once we start going into the text itself. Maybe some... a couple of times, we've been going into plan chapters and as we're drafting, we think of something based on the community's input. And so the goal or the recommendation may change slightly, or we may think of a better recommendation to really hit that goal. But under this category, a few of the recommendations are to encourage the development of vacant and underutilized properties in downtown and across the state. Support a balanced mix of uses that create attractive residential areas, well-paying employment opportunities, high-quality open spaces, and recreation opportunities. We also have ensure that the historic preservation ordinance supports the preservation and rehabilitation of the city's historic structures while allowing for the modernization or for modernization where appropriate. Ensure successful implementation of the Galena City Code and the code ordinances which should be reviewed and aligned for the comprehensive plan's future land use map. And promote the preservation of Galena's historic downtown or welcoming redevelopment. So that's what we have as initial recommendations and considerations under this broad goal for land use and development. Now, one of the things that we mentioned in here is reviewing and aligning the existing codes with the comprehensive plan. We recommend that after the comprehensive plan has been adopted, because oftentimes in order to achieve these goals that are in the comprehensive plan, there might be some changes to the zoning code, for example, that we need to occur. But that has to happen after the comprehensive plan is adopted in order to make sure that the code and plan are in alignment. They do talk to each other. So some of the things that you may need to look at here, zoning code would be making sure that your setbacks are right-sized for the type of development that you're hoping to achieve, for the type of redevelopment that you're hoping to achieve. You may be looking at some height considerations. You may be looking at your open space requirements or things like parking. Those are the types of things that would often be areas of the zoning code just to take a look at after this process to make sure that the two are talking to each other. Were there any initial reactions to either the goal or some of the recommendations? Now, the rest of the goals are getting into very specific areas. So we'll be talking about residential uses and areas, commercial, industrial, et cetera. So some of those might have a little bit more specific things that we want to talk about. But feel free, if, again, if we're talking about something else and you're like, can you go back to that other slide? We can certainly do that. Okay. So for residential areas, we have two main goals, which are provide well-connected neighborhoods that offer diverse types of housing at varying price points, ensuring accessibility and inclusivity for residents at every stage of life. That's goal one. Goal two is to ensure that new housing in neighborhoods thoughtfully balanced growth and preservation, blending the city's rich historical character with future development.
It's certainly much easier said than done, but I think you're right on track.
The goals are very aspirational, but that's why we get into recommendations. We want to make sure that we give you concrete and implementable actions that you can take in order to achieve these goals over time. And some of these are a lot of encourage. If we need to have different language that's a little bit more pointed, we're certainly looking for that kind of feedback as well. So under this particular land use with these goals, we have some recommendations that include encourage the development of a variety of housing types, addressing housing needs for diverse groups at diverse price points. Support the development of workforce housing, enabling people to both live and work in Galena. Evaluate the design guidelines and the historic preservation ordinance to determine whether revisions are required to allow for more redevelopment opportunities while maintaining historic structures. Support infill development throughout the city and in downtown Galena to increase housing options. Encourage downtown building owners to convert upper-floor commercial spaces into residential units. Strengthen the enforcement of housing codes and rental inspection programs. And encourage renovating and preserving existing housing stock to maintain neighborhood character. Now, I will note that we had a conversation with staff about these as well. And as far as enforcement of housing codes and rental inspection programs is concerned, we understand that that's probably the best that it's ever been within the city. So that specific recommendation may be tweaked slightly to recognize that there's been really good work and progress made in that arena. So that might be something like continue to enforce the housing codes and rental inspection programs. Little bit more wordsmith than what we have right now. Does anybody have any questions, reactions, anything that we need to keep in mind here? Anything that we may have missed on initial reading?
I'm good.
I think we're good.
Okay, great. Moving on to commercial and industrial areas, we have two goals as well. One is to develop and expand commercial businesses along Galena's major corridors, supporting economic diversification and growth. And encourage new commercial and industrial development outside the tourism industry to create a resilient economy that serves both residents and businesses. So one of the things that we heard about quite a bit when we were talking to folks, doing the focus groups and the interviews, the workshops with the public participation component back in October, was that while the tourism industry is really, really strong and thriving in Galena, there are opportunities to diversify that economy that's more resident-focused. So that's what we're trying to get at with these specific goals. So when we're talking about development along the commercial corridors, we're not talking about necessarily a wholesale change of downtown Galena. And in fact, the downtown is one of the areas that we will be talking about as subareas, so taking a little bit more of a deeper dive there. But looking at opportunities along the Highway 20 corridor, for example, and are there opportunities to provide more regional or even national types of businesses that would serve the residents and the community? So some of the specific considerations or recommendations under this category and these goals are to prioritize industrial and regional commercial development in the northwest... in Northwest Galena near US Route 20 to minimize residential impact while supporting job growth and diversification.
So with that one, and I cheated, I looked ahead at the map, you're literally only saying this teeny little block on the west end.
Are there other areas that we shouldn't be considering for this one?
Well, I remember when we did the mapping exercises, I actually think we were all in that. There was actually Doc, Carrie, out this way farther to enlarge this. There were these discussions out here more. And there were also discussions on this end.
For commercial or for commercial and industrial?
I thought it was the commercial and industrial, wasn't it?
Well, I actually had the same question. And I can't remember if it was both or one or the other, but I know when I looked at the map, I had the same thought too. I thought it doesn't really look like things changed from the existing layout.
Yeah, it was disappointing, I'll be honest. And maybe it's industrial. Maybe I've got it wrong. I'm sorry. So I apologize. It is purple's industrial. The industrial hasn't changed. And we talked about, and maybe I'm missing it here, but I thought we talked about... Oh, I guess I got to take you back to item one in the vision. Because you only talked about expansion of commercial business, not industrial. And I very clearly heard industrial in those meetings.
Actually, that's a good point. I didn't catch that either. But I know when we were talking expansion, it was commercial and industrial.
Yeah, it was. So we need to go back to, yeah, this, and expansion of commercial businesses, commercial and industrial businesses. That was very clearly articulated in the mapping sessions. And again, can't speak for the rest of my teammates here, but we're not trying to take away from the downtown and the history here, but we also got to have a balance, as you stated, to make sure we got a resilient economy. I like how you put that. So if that's the case, under key recommendations for commercial and industrial areas, could we prioritize industrial and regional commercial development? And do we have to specify northwest? Because to your point and the comment I made, you know, we talked about lots of areas on both.
Yeah, I saw it everywhere.
Yeah.
Which may not be realistic, but do we also want to limit it or not?
Probably not.
Yeah. The map just doesn't... I look at the map and I see the same block of industrial that it feels like we got today.
That's what I thought too.
Well, once we get to the map, if you can highlight those areas.
Got it.
We'll definitely take those into consideration. I think one of the things that we had heard was that there was still space available within and surrounding the existing industrial park in the northwest. So perhaps that was our focus and perhaps that's a little bit too narrow.
Yeah, I would definitely, in my opinion, I would take out restricting ourselves in northwest. I would just say near the US Route 20. Yeah?
Along, yeah.
Or along the 20 corridor or something.
Okay. Other considerations and recommendations that we have for this particular land use category and these goals were to activate downtown Galena with a mix of uses that balance the needs of residents, business owners, and visitors. Continue to support tourism as an economic driver for the city. That's not intended to be detracting from the other areas that we're recommending to have these other expansion portions for these types of uses as well. So they're not intended to be contradictory. Continue working with partners such as the Galena Chamber of Commerce and Galena Country Tourism to ensure that city's businesses and community events are advertised across the region. Partner with schools and the business community to align workforce development with employer needs. Attract high-quality retail stores, dining options, and shops to create a vibrant business environment that supports the everyday needs of Galena residents. And use economic development tools such as tax increment financing, special services areas, and business development districts to facilitate commercial developments where appropriate.
Just out of curiosity, when you're talking about partnering with the schools and the business community to align workforce development with employer needs. We only have K through 12 here. Are we talking about programs with like the Votec Schools and Elizabeth and Piasta? Trying to understand what we're going to partner with the school with.
Sure.
For.
Sure. So schools can be as broad as what you just mentioned, and perhaps we can get a little bit more specific with what schools we're actually talking about with what types of workforce developments that we're mentioning here. One of the things that we heard from with students that we spoke with was kind of this perceived gap in having trade schools kind of promoted at the high school level. So those were kinds of the partnerships that we were thinking of, where the conversations could happen with the high schools, partnering with the business community, seeing if there might be some synergies there to create some kind of link between the schools and, you know, the vocational trades. There are other opportunities to do things like that as well. That's just one example.
Okay, that helps explain it.
So we can get much more specific with that then.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Moving on to transportation and mobility, our main goal here is ensure a robust and comprehensive multimodal, which is walk and bike-friendly, transportation system that efficiently and safely... bike-friendly, transportation system that efficiently and safely connects residents and visitors to all parts of the city and to the surrounding region. So some of the recommendations and considerations under this goal are to explore opportunities to expand parking options in downtown Galena, very, very big priority. Improve wayfinding signs, design, and branding elements in downtown to provide navigation for residents and visitors. Improve regional connectivity by improving access to and from US Route 20 and Illinois Route 84. Enhance collaboration with IDOT and Joe Davis County to address transportation needs on state and county roads. Enhance collaboration between the city and Joe Davis County to expand public transportation network and increase options for residents and visitors in the city. Expand and enhance the bike network in the city by providing on-street bikeways, improving bike lane visibility and safety, and ensuring connections to key destinations such as downtown, parks, and trails. And improve pedestrian connectivity and accessibility by closing gaps and sidewalks and adding ADA compliant features such as curb ramps and crosswalk enhancements.
Improving the regional connectivity on Highway 20 and Route 84. You know, short of a bypass around Galena, I don't know what plans are there.
In my guessing, maybe that one of the things brought up many times during some planning meetings was a traffic study onto US 20, right over there on the east side where the corner car was going to be built. I'm wondering if some of that is maybe there was talk of building a second bridge so you can... I mean, there was some big talk, but I wondered if that was maybe what was covering that is look at the traffic flow, the traffic flow with the bridge.
I agree, because I've been in that with you, but I was kind of caught off-guard with the Route 84 too. It's like, what is the significance with that? They just redid that, didn't they, a few years ago?
My memory paves, but...
Yes, that's true. But yeah, there is... That's why I thought the IDOT one maybe was in there. We gotta get more...
Oh, yeah. Maybe more turning lanes or something of that nature, I guess. Okay.
Well, and I think part of what this is getting at is not necessarily improving the route itself, but access to and around those areas.
Okay.
So that could be looking at things like, do you have sufficient sidewalks and pedestrian facilities there? Are there opportunities to do improvements to accommodate bicycle facilities or multimodal path? Or are there just some other, you know, areas around there that we can talk about, maybe doing some kind of alternate link that would get you to closer to that area for connectivity purposes?
Could maybe as an action, could we get a little more information on how this came to be? Because I just don't remember this anywhere. If we get asked, I'd like to be able to educate it.
The regional connectivity one?
Yeah, on 20 and 84. Just a little more clarity, because like I said, if we get asked, we want to be able to speak to it, so.
Right.
Absolutely.
Any other comments on those recommendations?
Next, we have community facilities and public infrastructure. This is actually our last land use category. We have two main goals here. Enhance community facilities, childcare services, and emergency response resources to support residents' needs, promote safety, and ensure access to essential services. And invest in and improve Galena's infrastructure and utility services to support growth, enhance resilience, and maintain a high quality of life for all residents. And some of the recommendations or considerations for these goals include support strategic partnerships with education providers and employers to understand workforce needs. Align the capital improvement program with a comprehensive plan to meet the infrastructure needs and priorities for the community. Identify funding opportunities for community-wide childcare services to serve current and future needs. Explore the feasibility of constructing a community event space. Evaluate the viability of establishing a city-funded paid fire department when the volunteer model of service is no longer sustainable. Explore opportunities for building upon Galena's existing public events, spaces, and amenities. Identify opportunities for funding and maintenance of existing and future parks and open space facilities. Connect parks and recreation areas with trails on existing rights of way and through neighborhoods where it is possible to support a more connected park system. And improve accessibility with ADA compliant features in downtown and create a connected, safe network of pedestrian and bike routes throughout the community.
The only thing I thought maybe to be under this section was, I don't know if you all hear this, but people have problems with connectivity downtown. I didn't know if that would fall in this category. Do you guys ever hear that with people not being able to get reception?
Cell phone connectivity?
Cell phone connectivity down here?
I was gonna say, because we've got fiber all the way downtown for the internet.
Would that be...
There was, there was the issue when the Verizon repeater came down, when the water tower came down by the schools.
Okay.
That had Verizon repeaters on it, and if anybody had Verizon, they knew it was terrible for a long time, especially on weekends when we had everybody. But then they put a new one up over by the church on Dodge Street.
Okay. Is it better down here now?
It's, at least for Verizon, it's much, much better. But I know there's still some struggle.
I don't know. It's just one thing I remember hearing, so.
We heard that as part of the public participation component as well when we were here in October. We can certainly add something in here that speaks to wireless connectivity or...
In the downtown, what do y'all think?
Well, downtown, yeah, I know when it's a busy tourist time, yeah, it's tough.
It has been an issue, and I'm not sure if it's fixed or not, so it would make sense to address it.
Okay.
And yes, once we get into the plan document itself, some of the recommendations may pivot slightly to become more specific as we get into the text of it. So one of the things may end up being exploring partnerships with the cell phone providers to see if there are opportunities to improve upon the existing network. Maybe there are, you know, small cell towers that could be put up in different locations and strategic areas to improve the cell service throughout the city. I know that there are, there's a, there was a movement throughout the country for, you know, adding the cell phone towers and small-scale, small cell towers as well. So if that's still something that is available as, you know, as an issue or as a program, then that's certainly something that we can explore.
As far as improving the accessibility of the ADA compliant features in downtown, do we know if the city is at all non-compliant in any way with ADA?
I think there are opportunities for...
Best improvement.
Improvements to ADA compliance even outside of the city-controlled spaces. So I think this is getting at both cities-controlled spaces and allowing for opportunities for downtown businesses to incorporate more ADA accessibility into their spaces. That could be through, and, you know, like, again, this is something that we can get into once we get into the plan text, but exploring a program that might assist a little bit with either the requirements, you know, doing more outreach, if there's a possibility to establish a small kind of loan or grant fund to kind of offset some of those costs for becoming ADA compliant. Those are opportunities to explore within the plan. It doesn't necessarily mean that everything has to happen, but those are some things that we can certainly include as recommendations or things to explore.
Good. Do we need anything in here, folks, about, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't there only one, you might have to phone a friend, Jonathan, but isn't there only one water? What is it going underneath the river somewhere?
I don't know.
What's your question?
What, isn't, don't we only have like one thing that goes under the river?
For water or sewer? We have, we have two water crossings and we have one sewer crossing. So on the east side, sewer crosses the, you know, your Baker Street, and then gets conveyed down toward the Illinois Bank of Trust, those, I think, goes to the plant from there.
I just wonder, do we need to think about, you know, 20-year, do we need to think about redundancies for the city? Like, they brought up at the meeting a bridge or something, but do we need to think about that just, just service?
Right, yeah.
Because if the bridge is out, the fire department's not gonna get there. If the sewer's out, that's gonna affect half of our community. Just curious, what we think about that?
Future-proofing?
And some of those things can be incorporated into CIP documents. CIPs are usually five years, five years down the road. If we mention these things as being things to incorporate into future CIP documents, that might be something that we can consider for, maybe not five years, maybe not 10 years, but thinking about it in the future to kind of consider that, start planning for it now. So these would be, if you were thinking about the structure of the comprehensive plan, these would kind of be the individual chapters under which we would start then, expanding up upon these ideas, adding in more text, being a little bit more specific with the recommendations. But this is kind of like the, the structure, the framework for the plan itself. Were there any questions or any other items that you wanted to discuss before we move on to the land use framework, which is getting into the map?
We're good.
So what is the preliminary land use framework? Well, it describes the character of land use and future development. This is the map that is going to guide the future development within the city, again for the next 20 years as it becomes, as it gets updated in between them as well. So this will be the map that also informs your zoning. These are the areas that you want to make sure are, this sets you up for any kind of rezoning opportunities that may need to happen as well. It is based on existing land use patterns and context. This isn't just something that we, you know, came up with. It is based in reality. It's based on reconnaissance work. It's based on the information that we received in talking with city staff, in talking with what the, you know, with the public about what the future vision is for the city. All of that comes down to this map as well. It is the foundation for future decision-making. So any type of development or redevelopment opportunity that comes before the city should be in alignment with this land use plan. That's why we spend so much time talking about it. We want to make sure that we're recognizing the areas of the city that are going to be maintained, that are going to stay the same and we want to preserve, but also allowing for those opportunities so that when the development comes to the city, you can capitalize on that. So this may be looking at some areas that might not currently meet with your zoning code. They may be slightly different from what is on the map, on the current land use map, but that's to encourage you to think about where are these opportunities for future So this is how those different areas align with each other. So the land use framework desires that, or identifies that desired future development. It guides how, when, and how should the development and redevelopment and infill opportunities within the city occur. So you'll see different areas that we've highlighted for specific kinds of developments. Those are the things that we'll want to talk about, making sure that we got them right. Once we get that land use plan, the framework correct, again, that will inform your zoning. The zoning are the regulatory measures, while the comprehensive plan is your policy. So the zoning code may need to be updated in order to allow for these types of things to be implemented. The zoning sets the design and development requirements and standards so that not only are you looking for these types of developments, but you're getting very specific about what the development should look like, how it should be developed on a very specific piece of land. And then implementation and zoning should be clear and easy. It needs to be understandable by the community, by the developers, and by city staff so that it is in alignment with what the city wants to see in the comprehensive plan as well. So all of these things work together and, in order to achieve the goals and the future vision for the city. This is what the existing land use is, and we went through this with the existing conditions memorandum. So this is based on field reconnaissance and ground truthing. This is what is in existence right now, and this is what is also informing the future land use map with the understanding that there are certain things that the city wants to see, certain developments that we want to encourage along the way. This is what the future land use is as proposed. So each future land use category, we have a definition for it, so it's not just a generalized category. It gets a little bit more specific about what is intended to be within that land use category. It's an example of, we have an example of where that land use currently is within the city so that people understand what type of development we're talking about, and then how it should apply going forward. How should commercial development, for instance, mix with or be influenced by the surrounding So we're gonna start from wide to more narrow. The rural and agricultural category has these four main components. It's a little bit difficult to see on the screen, but it's the area of, I guess that's kind of like a cream color. It's green on my screen, but it's the majority of the area that's outside of the city boundaries. These land uses include properties that are used for agriculture, your traditional farming and livestock-raising activities. They're not exclusive of, but not primarily low-density residential homes and estates are on larger lots, but some of these may actually lack access to city services. So these are gonna be on larger lots that may have well or septic. These types of properties and uses are also located on the periphery of the municipal boundary, as well as the edges of the planning area. The planning area is 1.5 miles from the city boundaries. And then development should be prioritized outside of rural land uses, but especially within the city limits so that we have that balance of the rural preservation with the potential for future urban development. So there is a lot of potential for this to remain rural and agricultural. We do have a few areas that are not noted on here that we will talk about that may be changing from this land use category to another. Any questions with the rural or agricultural land use? With the caveat that there might be a couple of changes here?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, so, because the areas that we were talking about when we were talking, commercial and industrial would take up some of this area, but then also single-family residential, we talked about at that planning commission here, I think it was this part, wasn't it, folks? For residential.
I think it was too, yeah.
Because I thought they talked about this is the residential and, I gotta get my bearings, right, but then, kind of there, over and down towards the hospital, I think, is the, is that the commercial and industrial? Which would consume some of, or upset this... Which would consume some of, or upset this, the?
So I'm, I'm actually gonna move on to the single family residential since that's what we're talking about now. There are a couple of areas that, um, we need to update on this future land use map as well that is not reflected in the map that you have in the memo. This is based on conversations with staff and we have, we received some additional information. So the area that is near, uh, was, is that Checkland Lane? In the yellow box that has a red boundary around it, that will be reflected as single family residential as well. There are a couple of areas that are also, uh, highlighted here that are reflective of existing single family residential. So, uh, one almost at the very boundary of the city, um, the planning area for the city at the north. Uh, there's another area on Black Jack Road. So there's about four areas that we will be reflective of, uh, residential as well. But if I'm understanding correctly, the area that is the major street that's identified here is Field Street, but to the northeast of that is where we're talking about additional single family residential.
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of like where that imaginary line is over to the river.
And then residential over by the hospital?
No, um. Again.
That was commercial, industrial, kind of expanding for an industrial park.
With these areas and then the one area I that will incorporate as well, were there any other areas that should be identified for future single family residential? That we don't have reflected here? The single family residential for those in the audience are kind of the yellowish areas, uh, within the city.
Are the new developments, the new lots and, uh, developments over by the golf course being considered in this? By Galena Golf Club? There are quite a few more lots now.
That'd be kind of a yellow above the golf club there?
Yeah, that's existing, I guess, you know, if we have all the new, there are a lot of new lots over there. So that could expand slightly.
Okay, we'll make sure that that's reflected. We also have identified areas for mixed residential. These are areas that provide, excuse me, a variety of housing types that include single family on smaller plots, but also go all the way up to multifamily and condominium buildings. So it's really intended to be a mix of any kind of, of residential, uh, development. There are two areas here that are Xed off. Uh, you'll note that's based on, uh, conversations with staff. So those are transitioning or will actually be reflected on the future land use map. Um, the larger X on the, on the southern end, that will be reflected as commercial. The smaller X kind of, uh, just above that, that will be, uh, identified as park and open space.
Any reason, I'm just asking, in that, uh, northwestern quadrant up here, why this isn't just to provide more? Just kind of X and Y it out, why that's not mixed residential? Just so there's more options? Is there something in there or is it just?
I think that was more, um, based on our conversation with staff about the potential for there to be other developments there. Um, it could be residential, it could be a mix of uses, it could be single family, it could be mixed residential, um.
Why not take it out of agricultural now?
What would be the, the desired land use there?
I don't know why we wouldn't just make it mixed residential now. What do you guys think? I mean, got, got a lot of weird, for some reason it's cropped, but assuming it's owned as farm, I don't know.
I believe some of that is outside the existing city boundaries and ending to the
Oh, that's what it is?
The township.
Well, we're providing a guide where we wanna see the growth happen, which directions we wanna push to, but we'll never be able to set a boundary of it needs to go here, or, you know?
Yeah.
So I think as long as we have an idea, we wanna see residential push out this direction, commercial push out this direction, that's the roadmap. You know, twenty years from now, I don't know what that's gonna look like and we can't really draw lines now, so I think the more, the idea is the overview, right, of kind of which direction we wanna see growth happen.
Yes, but we also do have to be mindful of how far out do you want that to extend? So while we typically go based on some kind of boundary, be it municipal boundary, be it roadway, be it um, parcel boundary, just some kind of area so that we're not just saying, you know,
We're extending to, yeah. It's a green now.
So with that in mind, for the mixed residential component, that would be somewhere around the golf club area. Um, how far out do you think that mixed residential should extend?
Well, it's already there. I mean, it's, you know, if you're looking there, the, the golf club's not green, but you already got the mixed residential, all that yellow up there. Again, I don't know if that's the limit or what, why it's got all this jagged, why don't we just square it off?
Square it off?
Yeah, and say, if we're gonna do it, this is where it's gonna go. It's a thought, I
There's a lot of privately owned land.
There.
Where, but, I guess.
Hang on.
That is a consideration because if you are showing this on, on land, there might be some, there might be some questions that arise from that.
And is it? The outline there, does that correlate with the property boundary there, or is that?
Well, we're showing the municipal boundary there, but we are also reflective of the existing, well, part of it is existing and part of it is what we understand to be the potential for that to be developed further out. So that's extending to other boundaries.
Quite honestly, anything that's not on here, isn't it privately owned anyway?
Well, I was gonna say, all the, all the farmland is privately owned, so then really we shouldn't be drawing on any of it.
Well, I mean, right next to Galena Golf Club, just south there, that's privately owned.
Yeah.
Farmland, yeah.
Yeah.
Most of it is.
It's gonna be the same way all the way to the hospital too.
Oh, yeah.
So it's kind, that's where you gotta give us some, uh, guardrails here.
Yeah, very cognizant of the fact that we're taking other people's land and saying, this is what you can do with it.
I, I can tell you that from the focus groups that we, that we conducted, the landowners that were, um, around the existing business park, industrial park area, um, they seem to indicate, uh, a desire or a willingness for us to show what we're showing on the future land use map.
Oh, that would be that area.
We have one more residential category that we can, uh, talk about as it's all kind of meshing together. Um, this one is very specific though because it's surrounding the downtown area. And we're calling this transitional residential. The reason that we're calling it transitional residential is because it features a mix of housing, but it's on that outskirts of the downtown core. Um, so there's strong connectivity to the amenities of, of the downtown area, um, and traditional neighborhoods. They have, uh, residential development that's integrated with the architecture of the area. Um, it's in a walkable environment. So these are the types of areas that are not likely to change much, but they do offer some opportunities for infill development, especially those that are context sensitive, meaning that they are of the same scale and character of the existing historic neighborhoods. So those are the types of areas that we're talking about for transitional. All of these residential categories are reflective of what we've seen in existing and also the potential for additional development. So you'll kind of see that single family residential is the predominant type of residential in, in Galena and within the planning area. With some opportunities for mixed residential and certain mixed residential that is existing. And then that transitional area that's right up the core.
Although there's not a lot over on Park Avenue, but doesn't have a house sitting on it today, is there?
There may be opportunities for that to transition to a residential type, even if it's not currently developed that way.
But I, I guess I'm not aware of too many lots or even vacant over on Park Avenue.
This doesn't necessarily have to be on a vacant lot, this could be a redevelopment opportunity as well.
So I mean, like on the east side of Park Avenue, there are all the homes and then it's a pretty sharp incline there, which isn't really as you're saying, there's
Well, and then down below, it's a flood plain, so you're not
Right. Right.
Isn't, is that the historic, isn't it Park Avenue or is it not? Can't remember.
And, and I guess the definition of infill development is?
Infill development is allowing for something, basically, let's take a look at downtown, for instance. If you had a development opportunity, either it's, uh, a lot that currently has a structure on it that can be um, dismantled, demolished, and then redeveloped that way, that's infill. Um, there are opportunities within residential neighborhoods as well. There might be existing vacant, uh, parcels that are just surrounded by completely developed parcels. That would be a, uh, an opportunity for infill as well. So it's really filling in the gaps where there could be additional development, but there aren't any developments there presently. It supports it, it just doesn't happen yet.
I don't know. Mix of housing types, I don't know, that just, I mean, you got Grant Park over there, you got I, I hear mixed housing types and I think of, are you talking condos, apartments?
It could be a mix of whatever kind of residential development happens in this, in this transitional residential neighborhood, we're saying should be context sensitive and of a similar scale to what is already existing. So you might be able to find an area within this transitional residential category where there could be a duplex or a triplex or a quad that would still fit in with the character of the neighborhood, the, uh, the architecture would still be similar. You wouldn't necessarily notice it because it would blend in with the, the rest of what's there. But then that would be next to, or within the same area as a single family residence. But the idea is that you have a blend of housing types. Um, and that's more getting into the mixed residential area as well. But specifically for this land use category, it's very much recognizing what is already there and making sure that whatever happens in those development opportunities or redevelopment opportunities still meets the character, um, of what's, what's there presently.
Do we have today transitional residential? I should know, but I don't, that's a great
I don't either.
This is, this was one of the categories that we talked about internally quite a bit. This is actually recognizing a lot of what's on the ground right now. So there, there are single family residential homes that are in close proximity to, like side by sides. But you wouldn't necessarily note it if you were just going down the street because it all blends together. Everything looks to be in the same kind of architectural style.
Isn't that mixed residential?
I think the reason that we called out this specific area for transitional residential is because of the location of where we're seeing it. We don't necessarily wanna say for a mixed residential area, um, in this particular case, because it's surrounding downtown, that there would be an opportunity for a high-rise multifamily building, per se, for example. But in the mixed residential, there might be opportunities, for instance, along the corridor, the Highway twenty corridor, where that might be appropriate. But in this particular location, we're not saying that it could be. So that's why we had a difference between mixed residential and transitional residential.
So this is a little more restrictive, obviously.
I wouldn't necessarily use the word restrictive, but what it's kind of doing is saying there's the downtown core. And then as you expand out from the downtown core, there is this kind of, um, development already that incorporates a mix, a small type of mix of housing that's likely to remain there, and you might have some opportunities for infill for, again, like those duplexes or whatever that might be context sensitive, um, you know, of the same type of scale, of the same type of architecture that you wouldn't necessarily know is a, is a duplex, for instance. As you expand outward, then you have more opportunities for single family residential on larger lots. And then as you expand farther out or in certain areas, you have opportunities for mixed residential that can support all, anything from a single family all the way up to a multifamily.
That makes sense to me.
Yep, okay.
And certainly as we move forward with this, if after tonight you look at this a little bit closer and you're like, you know what? This area just isn't sitting right with me, or this area really needs to have this type of development, or we missed something in, you know, this goal or what have you. Definitely get that information, uh, to Hillary or to Jen, um, and they will get us that information and make sure that it gets incorporated. So this isn't your one and only opportunity to give us input. I understand that sometimes when you talk about these things, you think about things later once you're letting things relate a little bit.
Sure.
And since we went from the, the transitional residential, now we're talking about the downtown Galena core, which is a little bit more specific. Uh, the land use accommodates, you know, commercial, residential and entertainment. It has tourist oriented businesses that are coexisting with the essential services that are provided to serve, uh, the residents, trying to sustain that balance um, that allows Galena to be that essential destination while still providing for the people who live here. Um, centrally located, uh, it serves as the heart of the community, has that historic charm and blending that vibrancy to create that dynamic, sustainable cultural hub. It should continue to encourage this type of blend of uses catering to both tourists and residents, um, but offering that unique lifestyle that draws people to the downtown. So future developments and redevelopments need to align with what the architectural, uh, components of downtown that makes it unique. Um, and also the, the beauty of the area. So in other words, recognizing that you do have the river there with some flood plain, how do you incorporate that, how do you sustain that with any kind of potential development as well? Um, as incorporating the historic, uh, architecture and development patterns that are down there. So downtown Galena is essentially going to remain as is, just with some improvements and possibilities for infill as it becomes available. And since that's a little bit hard to see, there's a zone, zip inversion for you. This does not show flood plains, by the way. This is only reflective of the river and then the park open space that's around it. So that might be inclusive of flood plain, but it doesn't have flood plain boundaries per se.
We got a pretty good idea where they're at.
The next land use category is commercial and commercial is your, your typical kind of goods and services, um, types of, of And commercial is your typical kind of goods and services types of, of, of services. So this can be anything from auto-oriented to drugstores, banks, grocery stores, and anywhere in between. These uses are typically concentrated along Highway 20 for those larger developments and also on some outlawed developments. We're recommending that commercial areas follow the appropriate scale and intensity, again, based on that context. What's with the, what's in the surrounding area? What is the character of the, of the neighborhood there? So some of the areas that we call out for expansion are the scenic meadows area, which is over by the Walmart, and cleaning quarters that offer diverse employment options, providing those goods and services that cater to residents. One of the things that we heard often in the outreach and engagement portion was that there is a desire for more regional or even national types of development in the, in the Highway 20 corridor. There are two areas here that are highlighted that will be updated. One, there's a yellow box with a red line around it, kind of hard to see, up by Franklin Street. Those were initially identified as commercial, but after speaking with staff, we recognized that that's, that's actually something at least to transition to residential. I think there's a home-based business there on one of them. So that was something that we had seen in our reconnaissance and that was just a, something that needed to be clarified.
Is that the meal lights?
I'm sorry.
Is that meal lights up there? Not that far?
It was like Dan Green's construction shed.
Oh, yeah, got it.
And then there's one more area that we're showing as commercial. The boundaries that we show on here are not exact. It was just a rough estimate of where that is over on Blackjack Road, that, that orange area to the southwest. But are there other areas for commercial development that we are not reflecting on here that should be?
Well, again, I would say, or maybe it's industrial, I guess.
Industrial's the next category.
Okay, right, I was gonna say, most of that ground along the Highway 20 corridor, it's farm ground. I assume that's in the next slide.
So this was the area that we were, or the land use category that we were talking about. Prior, it was kind of combining commercial and industrial. So these two categories are, they're separated here for, for discussion purposes. So my understanding is that this, this type of land use should also be expanded.
Very much so. I mean, you know, that's not much industry.
So would it expand farther west from those existing boundaries? Or are there other areas?
West and north, I'd have said.
West and north.
I'd have taken it out, Shetland, and then all the way up to the road gets you right to the hospital. So I think the hospitals in this area here, right up north lines. Yeah, yeah, so if it was me, if you really want industrial, you gotta bump it out and take it up. But some of those lots aren't any bigger than the old, are they? The ones, what is that, MicroSwitch, that little purple one?
Oh, is that the little one?
Yeah.
And then is that, the purple there, is that... Where's the existing boundary of the industrial part? Did that change at all? Or is that about the same?
This is showing going to municipal boundary.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mary.
To the municipal boundary, to the city of Galena boundary.
So does that include guys, then? Where would guys be at? Because they're at the end right now.
I think they're partially within the city and partially outside of the city limits.
Yeah, then there's really no expansion.
Yeah.
It's all consumed.
Yeah.
Any other areas that should be shown as industrial or commercial?
Was there anything on the other end? Does there, do you remember?
We talked about it, but I don't remember any particular area that would be good. We talked about going a lot further along 84, but that's
Yeah.
Out of the scope of Galena.
Way out, yeah.
You do have the opportunity to show things within your one and a half mile planning boundary.
Oh, well, that was then, to your point, Desiree, that was this area right here.
Big way up, yeah. I mean, I don't know if it was that or not, I just know that was discussed during the planning meetings.
I don't think, from my recollection of the focus groups, I don't think anybody mentioned anything specifically on 84 or past that area. It was, Highway 20 corridor was mentioned quite a lot.
Yeah, it, it was mentioned in your group and when I was in up there, like where the Y is at?
Yep.
To have it up in there, simply because the Future 20 project takes it through there, so it would be accessible, I think is what folks...
Yeah, yeah.
Whether that ever happens.
Yeah. You're betting on that, are you?
Yeah, no way. I wasn't one of those people that bought all that crap for you.
So we have two more land use categories, and then we can bring this all together and you can see it all on one map again and see how that, how these land use categories are reacting to each other. So the public and semi-public, those are pretty much recognizing existing government uses or municipal facilities, community service providers, medical, schools, places of worship, et cetera. So we have a couple of those areas that are spelled out here. City Hall, police station, fire station, existing schools, et cetera. So over the next 20 years, these uses should expand into developing areas as necessary, ensuring continued access to vital services and community resources. The difficulty with the public and semi-public land use category is that this will come up as needed. So unless you have something that's on the books right now as a planned development for a new facility, or you know of, for instance, if there's going to be a satellite hospital facility that's going to be expanding or locating around here, these will come up on kind of a development needed, a development basis. So you may need to amend the map just as that happens. There is an area on here as well in the southwest part of the, I can't point to it with my, with my mouse, but that was the area that was called out earlier. That's going to change to commercial, so west of Blackjack, just east of the river.
What would be, just a suggestion, nice for, at least for me to have, would be current state and include the city line and then future state with the city line.
I have a slide for that.
Open.
All right.
But we have one more land use category first, uh, two, sorry. Parks and open space, so these are existing both public and private parks and open space. So you notice that the golf course is identified as parks and open space. That would still be considered under this category because it's, even if it's a private area. But it includes Fort Sheenmount Preserve, Bueller Preserve, Mississippi River Boat Ramp, Galena River kayak, canoe kayak launch, and existing parks. So that's reflective of the existing infrastructure, parks and open space. And then there's the one area that's just off of Blackjack Road that we identified here. Kind of hard to see, but it's outlined in red, that's going to be reflected as parks and open space. And then finally, we have transportation and utilities. Again, these are existing areas that are incorporating either water sewer, electric, or those kinds of facilities. And again, these are the types of facilities that, if they expand, will probably come up on an as needed or on a development basis. So same, similar to the public and semi-public uses, this would need to be revised to reflect any new plans for an expansion of a facility that incorporates water sewer or other types of transportation and utilities, infrastructure. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that you have to amend the map for every IDOT project, for example. This is really just if you were to, if you were looking at expanding or adding a new wastewater treatment facility or water facility or something like that. This is bringing it all together once again, and I can show you side by side. So this is existing land use on the left. So that first slide that we talked about way at the beginning when we were looking at the maps, this is what's on the ground right now. The draft future land use map, that's our future condition. The draft future land use map will have a couple of changes based on what we heard from staff, what we heard tonight, and if there are any other comments between now and, let's say, the next week or two, that will be incorporated as well.
Once you have it incorporated in the next week or two, Hillary, is that something we can get to see to make sure it corresponds to what we discussed this evening?
Yes, yes. So we will, like I said, we'll take the next week or two to incorporate any comments. The sooner that we can get the comments, the sooner we can get them incorporated, which means the sooner you can get to see them, make sure that we have everything right. Once we come to a consensus about, yes, this is where we should be with the future land use, then we start, we hit the ground running with drafting the plan elements. This memorandum, once it incorporates all of those comments, will also be posted to the project website. So anybody will have the opportunity to take a look at this in a little bit more detail as well. And this is just giving you a side by side showing the existing land use and the future land use categories for downtown.
Could you go back?
Absolutely.
So I know we talked about it, but you know, is, is there a reason why we wouldn't mark on the map? And I'm looking at like the Anspeller property right north of Casey's.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
The, the property right north of Casey's along Highway 20, and then in between the industrial park up to the hospital? I mean, is there, they currently are in the city limits, but they'd still be in that area that I could see a potential developer saying, hey, I'd like to put this there.
Commercial, industrial?
Yeah.
But are you...
You're talking this area right in here, Joel.
Right by, right gates?
Yeah, right there.
So it'd go kind of like this, this whole area?
Well, I don't know if you'd need the whole area, but at least right on the 20 corridor.
On the 20.
And then north of, north of guys.
Yeah.
So I have, as part of my notes to incorporate, expand the industrial use from the existing boundaries, kind of square it off from Shetland all the way up to Norris. Make that industrial. The area below that, do you want to show that as commercial or industrial?
Can it be both?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, there could be a potential there, I don't know.
You could do half and half, meaning half of the area you could show as industrial, the other half you could show as commercial. So you would have that continuity of the industrial and that kind of transition to commercial.
Fine with that, I...
Yeah.
I was kind of, I'm off topic here now, but I'm kind of wondering, we had commercial on the existing stretching down Shetland, and then it just went away on the new one? Was there a reason for that?
Well, that's where I had my line drawn, that we turned that into the industrial and went all the way up to Norris.
Yeah, you know, I, I don't know.
There is a single-family residential neighborhood that's right next to that. There could be an opportunity for that to be like a transition zone, so you would step down to the, the single-family residential, meaning you could have industrial transitioning to commercial transitioning to residential, transitioning to the existing single-family. If that's something that you want to see there. Or you could have industrial transition to commercial, transition to either mixed or a single-family.
I'm not sure what it technically should be called, but I think it should at least...
There's opportunity.
Yeah.
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 I agree.
That might be an area that, once we, once we wrap up tonight, if you can kind of think about where you would want to see those delineations approximately, it doesn't have to be perfect. That might be something that, once we see it, we can incorporate into the map a little bit easier than kind of talking it out without drawing it out, if that makes sense.
Yep, that makes sense. Does that make sense with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, so the last thing that I want to talk to you about are next steps. As you can see, we have a five-step process. We've already gone through the first three. So the next part, after about the next week or so, getting comments incorporated from everybody, making sure that we're all on the right, you know, on the same page and going in the right direction with this future land use map. Then we start getting into the draft comprehensive plan elements in the downtown subarea. We start beginning work on that in a minute. The next time that we come out here will be probably end of April, early May, to present those plan elements in the subarea to you all for feedback. That will also go to the boards and commissions. And then we get into drafting final comprehensive plan, putting it all together, putting it out for public comment, and moving on to the adoption phase. So we have this scoped out to, or kind of scheduled out to be adopted somewhere around September. So we do have some time to get some, you know, revisions to the draft before it goes to adoption. Also incorporating that public comment period, there will be an open house that will be scheduled once we have a draft to present.
Thank you, Karen.
So with that, I just want to say thank you so much for your input. This has been very valuable. And again, if you have comments, if you can get us, you know, markups on a map, that works great, too. Get those to Hillary or Jen within the next week or so. We'll make sure that we incorporate them so that we can keep this conversation going. But thank you so much for your input, really appreciate it.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Do we want to take five minutes and just?
Scribble on the map?
Scribble on one, see if we agree.
You can, I'm all here.
Just a thought.
Hillary, do you have a map?
I got one right here.
Oh?
You okay with that, though? You can delete it?
Yeah, I think that's fine. Jeez.
Got it, buddy.
It's twice now.
Just wanted to make sure we agreed. I was trying to take notes, but I think we just said make this residential. Is that what we said?
That's over on Market Street.
Yep. Okay, then, didn't we just say this was mixed, just square it off?
If that's possible.
Yeah, I think so.
How far up did you want it to square it here like that, or just up to here?
Well, I mean, assuming we can, might as well.
Just square it off.
Square it off.
Yep. And then, my thought, just my thought.
And you know there might be a farmer here that disagrees.
I know.
However, I found, though, when the price is right.
I'll tell you, I know my dad, and that doesn't exist.
But is he gonna be around in 20 years?
That's his guy.
Yeah, that's right.
I was just thinking, square it off and make it industrial. Is that what we thought?
It's somewhere in there?
Yeah, just right in here.
Yeah, because this was, yeah, right through there.
They had all of this.
Yeah, which I don't know if that's
You don't need that.
Realistic, but...
Well, it's kind of hard.
I don't know if you do this industrial, or does it do, this had a slower commercial, but it's...
That's what I was wondering, do you do this?
No.
Oh, okay.
Either one, I don't know, and it should be, could be...
Or maybe, maybe due to here is commercial. Okay. And then, did you want this commercial, and then this?
You know, there's the curb cut there.
Yeah.
And I know there's obviously a house there, but I believe that's... Did you ask Desiree, she even wants to develop that land, because the hospital?
I just told him no. My dad's got some feelings about that.
But you want this commercial, you guys?
Okay. And south of Honeywell?
Yeah.
I can't spell. And then should we just put this little block in here as...
Right?
Careful how far north you go, because we gotta get water and sewer out there. And our plant is on the south side of town.
Not our problem.
Okay, great.
Is there a motion, Djer?
I motion.
Motion, second by Desire, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Where's your?
Bourbon pen.
Yeah, what was that?
Good happy bun.
I miss your old man not driving by honking.
Yeah. Two years already.